And it is six thirty. Welcome to the Charter Oak Unified School District School Board Meeting. And we are in open session. Roll call, all board members are present with the exception of Mr. Rose, who was unable to make it. We'll go to report of action in closed session. In closed session, the governing board took the following action. During closed session, the board voted to approve a settlement agreement in special education case SE 2025-2026-02. Approved the settlement agreement as presented. The motion was made by Mrs. McGuire and seconded by Dr. Aguilar. The vote was three zero with Mr. Rose and Mrs. Flores absent for closed session. In governing, let's see, during closed session, the board voted to approve the settlement agreement, the special education case SE 25-26-03. The motion was made by Dr. Aguilar, seconded by Mrs. McGuire. Vote was three zero with Mr. Rose absent and Mrs. Flores not there for closed session. And in closed session, the board approved an unpaid suspension against, excuse me, unpaid suspension agreement between the district and classified employee number DC 25-26-06. The roll call vote was as follows, three in favor, no negative, no abstentions, and absent were Mr. Rose and Mrs. Flores. And that'll take us to the pledge of allegiance, Dr. Kim.
All right, thank you, Mr. Peterson. It is my pleasure to welcome the principal of Willow Elementary School, Ms. Lisa Berry, to introduce her pledge of allegiance students. Ms. Berry.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
All right. All right. It is my pleasure to recognize Caleb for his responsibility, perseverance, and strong commitment to learning. Caleb is an outstanding student who sets a wonderful example for others through his hard work, positive attitude, and integrity. Caleb takes his learning seriously and always gives his best effort. When things get tough, he doesn't give up. Instead, he asks questions, works hard, and keeps trying until he understands. His determination and love of learning really stand out. As a class representative and leadership, Caleb takes initiative and contributes meaningfully to our school community. He often volunteers for extra duties and approaches every responsibility with enthusiasm and reliability. His actions reflect a true sense of citizenship and leadership, making him a role model for his peers. Caleb's perseverance, responsibility, and creative spirit make him a shining example of leadership and excellence. Thank you for representing Willow tonight and leading us in the flag salute.
All right, that'll take us to item number eight, board awards. Dr. Kim.
All right, we'll turn it right back to Ms. Berry to introduce her superstar student and her partner in education.
All right, I will start with my superstar student, Emily San. Come on up, Emily. Okay. It is with great pride that I recognize Emily San for her exceptional leadership, responsibility, and positive spirit. Emily exemplifies what it means to be a dedicated and caring member of our Willow community. Emily is a student who consistently looks for ways to contribute and make a difference. In the classroom, she's always attentive to what needs to be done and steps forward to help without being asked. Whether assisting classmates or tending to her classroom responsibilities, she does so with initiative, efficiency, and pride. As treasurer for student leadership, Emily's leadership qualities shine. She takes her responsibility seriously, carefully managing funds and helping with school events such as selling grams and organizing the costume parade. Her enthusiasm and reliability make her a trusted and respected student leader. Emily's hard work, integrity, and positive attitude bring warmth and encouragement to everyone around her. She leads by example, demonstrating both confidence and compassion. Emily, your dedication and joyful spirit truly reflect the best of our school values. It is an honor to present you with Willow Students, our stellar student award, and to celebrate the positive impact you have made in our school community. Congratulations. Okay, next I'd like to recognize my partner in education, Georgine Dunlap. Georgine, if you could join me. It's my pleasure to recognize Georgine Dunlap for her incredible dedication and service to our school community. Education is a shared responsibility, and Georgine has consistently gone out of her way to support students, teachers, and families alike. Georgine has been an active member of the Willow community since her daughter Evelyn began kindergarten. Over the years, she had served the PTA many roles, including historian, fourth vice president of volunteers, president, treasurer, and on the PTA council as secretary and program chair. In every position, she has brought organization, creativity, and heart while keeping the needs of students and staff at the forefront. Her leadership and support have touched nearly every aspect of our school, from coordinating programs to encouraging parent involvement and assisting teachers whenever needed. Georgine's contributions have strengthened our school community and enriched the educational experience for our students. Willow is deeply grateful for her years of service, leadership, and commitment, and it is why I'm recognizing Georgine as this year's partner in education for her exceptional contributions and lasting impact on our school. Thank you, Georgine.
And now I'd like to call up Dr. Robin Perez for some additional recognitions.
Good evening, President Peterson, Vice President, Dr. Aguilar, the board, Superintendent Kim. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I'm so honored to be before you to present some incredible humans. One of the best parts of my job, student athletes. So I'm here tonight to honor some of our student athletes. They embody heart, resilience, leadership, and the spirit of our school. Their growth as students and as athletes remind us every day what it means to be grounded in character, to work hard, to rise through challenge, and for teamwork and purpose. Tonight, I'm proud to introduce two programs and not only, that have not only excelled through league competition, but they've also advanced to CIF postseason playoffs. First, our volleyball, our varsity volleyball team is here. They're led by head coach Joel Baza, if you'll stand up. Cheyenne Ramirez. John Islas. So in the short two years at the helm, this team has led our program to a remarkable growth. These coaches have passion, vision, and steady guidance. They've transformed our program, and it's been a proud and respected team of incredible girls. They took the second place position in our league, and they also qualified for CIF. Just a huge testament to success of their hard work, the culture that this program has built. It's been a rewarding experience, and we look forward to the next season. So just for a few words, I want to introduce two important leaders, our captains. I've got Jade Camacho and Jaylee Nahera, if you want to come up. I'm going to ask that their teammates, their teammates come up and stand behind them as well.
Hi, I'm Jade Camacho, captain of the volleyball team.
And I'm Jaylee Nahera.
We just want to say thank you to our coaching staff for their constant support and guidance and belief in us. Their dedication pushed us to rise to every challenge and not only grow as athletes but as people. I'm extremely grateful for every girl on the team. Being a leader for this group really taught me about responsibility, communication, and what it means to lift each other up on and off the court. Leading this team was about creating trust, keeping each other strong, and building a true family within another.
We just want to thank everyone for the support, especially from Charter Oak. Everyone showed up for us at our games.
Thank you.
All right, next I would like to recognize our football team, the undefeated Sierra League champions. These remarkable young men, they've really exemplified commitment, dedication, and heart throughout their season. Their efforts carried them all the way through to CIF quarterfinals, and we could not be prouder of what they have accomplished. We also want to honor not only the outstanding athletes, but their coaches, some of which who are here tonight. Our athletic director, Dominic Farrar, and our head coach. He's not here with us tonight because he's actually with a Sierra League meeting planning for the future, but we want to give him a heartfelt shout out along with the coaches that are here. This coaching team that has consistently showed up for our boys, they have not only helped them grow athletically, but they have raised them to be young men of integrity. And again, we couldn't be prouder. It's my privilege, I'm going to introduce three of our student athletes who are present tonight. They're the best of who we are in every way. So please welcome Corinne Berry, Diego Flores, and J.D. Sanchez.
I just want to say that it's an honor and privilege to play for such an amazing historical high school. I just want to thank all the community of Charter Oak, from the staff to all the coaches just for helping us pursue our goals and dreams.
I just want to say thank you to the community and the board. This wouldn't be possible without you guys, and thank you.
Kind of like Corinne said, we're just thankful for all the support. We've been here four years, you know, we'd rather be here than any other high school. So I just thank you guys again.
All right, that'll take us to our student representative report. Heather?
Good evening. I'll begin with the Willow report. Willow has been buzzing with excitement this fall as we focus on our school-wide goal of increasing parent engagement. Families have had many opportunities to connect with the school community and be a part of the fun. They kicked off things with the popsicles and principal, followed by back to school night, and PTA's family craft night, and the bubble run. As the weeks continued, families have joined us for Wildcat of the Month assemblies, coffee with the principal, trunk or treat, and the annual costume parade, and our Veterans Day assembly. Each event has been a chance for parents to visit campus, engage with teachers, and celebrate the achievement of our students. We are thrilled by the turnout and enthusiasm from our families, and these events have strengthened the connection between home and school. With so much more momentum, we look forward to more opportunities to build parents into the heart of Willow and continue building a strong, connected school community. With the fifth, fourth, and fifth grade rotations, the fifth graders and the fourth graders' teaching team has implemented an engaging daily rotation model for this year where each teacher focuses on a specific area, writing, reading, and literature, and reading informational texts and social studies. This approach allows students to receive targeted instruction in each subject while benefiting from the expertise of each teacher. To support the system, students use color-coded binders to stay organized as they move between rotations. The structure has encouraged students to take ownership of their learning, and we've already seen growth in their maturity, responsibility, and organization. By rotating through focused instruction, students are not only building a strong academic skill, but also developing habit that support long-term success. The collaboration among teachers and the international intentional structure of the rotations create a learning environmental environment that is both challenging and supportive, helping students reach their full potential. All right, and now for the high school report. All of our sports have finished their seasons, except water polo, who is currently playing through state. Of girls varsity tennis, our senior captain Joanna Vong placed second in prelims and moved on to CIF. Volleyball made it to their first round of CIF and fought hard, shining on the court. As I said earlier, boys water polo has been named the D4 league champions, and they played their championship game at the Mount Sac pool and won during overtime. This was a huge accomplishment for the Charter Oak Aquatics Department, and they have additionally won their first round of state and currently played their second round tonight. Football has been announced the 2025 Sierra League Champions, where they made it to the second round of CIF last Friday, where all their hard work, both in effort, both on and off the field was shown. Last week, the Charter Oak Theater Department closed their performance of Holiday Inn, where they had six shows over the course of two weeks. There's included beautiful hand-built pieces and so much hard work from everyone backstage and onstage. Costumes were also carefully designed to coordinate with specific holidays, and once more being designed by the talented students in the department. Our homecoming dance on November 8th ended with a great night where many students enjoyed the dance at the beach. There was a high engagement of students from all over the school that were able to go on a Ferris wheel, swing, and a ferry. Many were also entertained with the food served, such as cotton candy and s'mores. October on our campus ended with a bang as students were engaged with the back-to-school spirit, or sorry, back-to-back spirit weeks, and campus lit up with a Halloween costume contest where the winner won an iPad and a decorated campus. College application deadlines are approaching for seniors, and our college and career center leader, Ms. Vasquez, is continuously working hard to partner with colleges and help support students and their application processes. Counselors have also been circling 11th and 12th grade classrooms with presentations about college and career planning. Our second M2 grading period ended, and students are now working hard to end their semester with, on a successful half. On behalf of all the Charter Oak students, we would like to thank the entire counseling staff for always working to support and further students' education. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. That'll take us to superintendent report, Dr. Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Good evening, board. It is great seeing you guys. Happy early Thanksgiving. It is that season that we're entering, and Thanksgiving for me just reminds me of just all the gratitude I have, gratitude for the work that's happening here, the good work that's happening, gratitude to our board for your governance and leadership, gratitude to my team, our team, our executive cabinet team, our cabinet team, all of our principals, all of our leaders. So grateful for all the teachers in our classrooms that are just really doing incredible work and making sure our kids are learning at high levels. All of our classified staff, whether in classrooms or in offices, whether servicing, students are servicing our schools, they're just doing incredible work and tremendous gratitude that we have in this season. And I think it reminds us of the theme that we started with at the beginning of the year, that this is home, and we're grateful for the home that we have. We belong here, we're welcome here, and every single one of us is needed here. And so really appreciate that effort. Last week, I was invited by, to this educational roundtable from Senator Perez and Assembly Member Fong, our important state legislators that represent various education committees in the state. And they wanted our insight in K-12 as well as higher ed about what are the needs that they're seeing, and the challenges, better yet, across our region. And first off, I highlighted the incredible work that's happening in our region, particularly here in Charter Oak Unified School District. Talked about really the bright spot that we are here in our school district and in this Cuvina area. And I did share very frankly that in our day and age, school districts are really being asked to do more with less. And we talked about and shared, some of my colleagues with them, that we've experienced lately expiration of one-time funds. We're experiencing declining enrollment. We're experiencing increasing costs to support our students with special needs, and we're concerned about the state's fiscal outlook, and it's impacting all districts, including ours, right? And we're doing the good work of developing and becoming fiscally stable and working alongside our educational partners and our leaders in doing so. And so, all that being said, they were super receptive, they understood, and I think we did a good job of just making sure that we presented and raised our voice about advocating for ongoing support and needs to assist all of our efforts here in Charter Oak Unified and for a greater sense, all K-12 school districts in California. Lastly, I just want to congratulate, obviously, our sports teams. Heather, I know she presented on this, but our word is, our water polo team did win today, and I believe they will be competing at the state finals, state championship round this Saturday back at Mount Sac. So we'll have and share with you guys what those times are. I'd be remiss if I didn't share how proud I am of all of our visual and performing arts teams. Our visual arts, our performing arts band, they've been competing at high levels. I know they're competing this weekend for championship round. I know our choir has been taking our kids through incredible experiences, and Holiday Inn was just incredible. So a lot of great work that's happening, both on the field, on the stage, in the classroom, a lot to be grateful for. With that, I turn it back over to you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any public comments?
Hi, everyone. My name is Christian Salama, and I'm here from the office of Congressman Gil Cisneros, invited here by trustee Flores. Thank you so much for that invitation. And I'm just here to introduce our office as a resource and as your Charter Oaks representative in the U.S. House of Representatives. You know, although Charter Oak is unincorporated and might not have a council and a mayor, I think that really provides offices like ours an opportunity to push for more advocacy, more representation at every level of government. I recently got to see the grand opening and ribbon cutting of the new Family Resource Center at the Sunflower site. I thought that was incredible because it shows so much about what the district thinks of education and how holistic it is, its view of education, and so we would love to be a part of that. And again, also as a district of choice, I just think Charter Oak is a great district in our congressional district, and we would just love to have a partnership with you all. And I'd just like to offer our office as a resource for that. So thank you, and I look forward to seeing you all at upcoming meetings and just out in the field.
Thank you. Can we get you to fill out a card so we have your information? Thank you. Any further? No others? Okay. All right, that'll take us to item 12, discussion on board policy revision, first reading on. Board policy, bylog exhibit 9270, conflict of interest. Any comments on that?
So just for clarity, we are updating our conflict of interest list to include new positions and which levels of conflict that they will have to declare.
That's correct, and it's required by the county board of supervisors.
Okay. We'll go ahead and push that. You got that one? That'll take us to action item, business item regarding resolution 1924-25. Dr. Kim, can you give us some background on that, please?
Yeah, we're looking forward to you, this resolution in consideration for the board. This is really exciting. As you know, and we've been presenting to the board roughly a year ago about the good work that's happening in partnership with the City of Covina. We received a grant roughly about a year ago in helping lay the plans for our Royal Oak Middle School Forestry and Greening Project. It's really bringing in nature, bringing in roughly up to 400 trees across the athletic fields and within the campus itself. What this resolution is asking for is the authority for my office to be able to work in concert with the City of Covina in pursuing additional grants so that we can now implement that project. Not only the project in the forestry plan, but also our vision for really upgrading and modernizing the athletic space for our students and a shared space for our City of Covina and our community. And so, this grant that we're pursuing, the Measure A1, would hopefully amount to upwards to $4 million. Then lay the groundwork of the plan and hopefully pursue the design phase and the implementation dollars for an athletic space. So, looking forward to the board's response to this.
Can I go and get a motion pulled up forward?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? I'm excited. This is actually getting going a little faster than it was before. I know the community's going to benefit from it, so I appreciate the efforts you're putting into that. With that, I'll call for the vote. Ms. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Aguilar?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Motion passes four zero. Oh, Heather?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And the student rep. So, four zero with student rep and the affirm. Takes us to educational services, item B1, K-12 data sharing and services partnership agreement with the Foundation of California Community Colleges. Dr. Kim?
All right. We're going to revisit this one, a really important and exciting opportunity. I'm going to have Dr. Mustafa share a little bit about this item, as well as introduce her colleagues.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Kim. As we recall last session, CaliforniaColleges.edu really streamlines the process of planning for college and career success, ensuring really that every student in California has equitable access to post-secondary opportunities. So to go a little bit deeper and to answer some of the questions from last meeting, I'm going to call up Dr. Ivan Iro, as well as Eric Martinez, to kind of answer some of the questions that were brought forth from last session.
Good evening, board president Peterson and members of the board. I'm going to give a quick overview, and then I'm going to hand it over to Eric, and then we'll open it up for questions. But this data sharing agreement with the California Colleges Guidance Initiative, or CCGI, will allow for the creation of Charter Oak Unified School District's College and Career Planning Platform on CaliforniaColleges.edu. CCGI was selected by the state to manage the CaliforniaColleges.edu based on the passage of Senate Bill 153. The Senate bill also added language to the California Education Code 6900-F3, requiring that all LEAs, or school districts, that enroll ninth through 12 students, enter into a data sharing agreement with CCGI by January 2026 as a first step towards implementation of the new CaliforniaColleges.edu. Through the platform, students in grades six through 12 will be able to utilize this tool to track their academic progress, explore career paths, and launch their college applications for the community college system, the California State University system, and the UC systems. Taking it one step further, Senate Bill 640 was signed by the governor and takes effect January 1st, 2026. This bill creates a streamlined implementation of the California State University Direct Admission Program with full statewide participation beginning for the 2027 applicants. So, recently, we have been in contact with Dr. Gromo, Assistant Vice Challenger from the Office for the CSU System. And she did verify that beginning January 1st, we will no longer have to, districts don't need to go into MOU, that automatically, once we get this platform up and running, our students will have access to the CSU Direct Access Program. And a quick overview of that program. What would happen is that because all of the students' grades and courses that they take that are A through G eligible are in the system and the platform, the schools have access to that and can automatically give them, you know, yeah, give them, you know, whatchamacallit, I'm sorry, direct admissions, I apologize, into their schools before the students even decide, "Do I want to apply there?" So it gives them more opportunity to say, "Wow, these schools all want me, so let me decide which ones I want to apply to." So that's one benefit that all of our students will have. I'm going to go ahead and send it over to Eric here to talk about the data privacy piece, and then we'll open it up to any further questions you may have.
Good evening, President Peterson and trustees of the board. So, we've grown rather accustomed to vetting these type of sharing agreements and these privacy agreements. We break it down into five key focus areas that I'll go through with you, but it goes without saying that this agreement here that applies to this initiative does meet all the standards and requirements that we like to see present and that we prefer to adhere to. So there's no issues present in this agreement. But the five areas of focus, ownership and purpose of data, which Dr. Iro already spoke to, how the data is shared, where it is shared, where it's not shared, privacy and security of the data, data encryption and data retention. And just generally and briefly, as it applies to this agreement, the LEA, which is us, will retain ownership of all student data and educational records forthwith. We know the purpose, but when it comes specifically to how it's shared and where it's shared, it gets shared with the foundation directly and no other third parties. It can't be used for advertising purposes, can't be sold. They are the custodian of the data that we share, but we are the owner. Without express written consent outside of the agreement, nothing of that data gets shared in any other express purpose, right? So we know exactly where it's going. Regarding the privacy and security, there's three federal and state privacy acts that we like to see present. Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, or FERPA, Children's Online Protection Privacy Act, which is known as COPA, and the Student Online Personal Information Protection Act, or SOPIPA, right, abbreviated, we like those. Those generally cover all personal identifying information. The COPA goes a little bit deeper for children under the age of 13, but what they do is they scrub the data. If it's ever going to be aggregated outside of the student's use, it gets removed. All that personal identifying information gets removed. No names, no phone numbers, no addresses, nothing along those lines. So the data is basically adhering to everything that we like to see present. We use that ourself within our own system here. As far as encryption of the data, wherever it's sitting, stored on their servers and wherever it's transmitted, there's encryption on both ends, which is very, very important. And then, this was probably the biggest focus area, the retention of the data. At termination or expiration of this agreement, we have the right to ask the data to be purged in full. We simply write them a notice, and they have 30 days to comply. We also have the ability to, again, in writing, request a copy or a download of our information, including the aggregated data, so that we can, you know, pull it for ourselves, use it for information, research, analysis, whatever. But we, again, get to own that data, and then they can purge it. So those five focus areas being covered in this agreement, we should feel pretty confident that we're standard, we're good to go with this agreement, so.
Prior to any questions, can I get a motion to bring this forward?
Still moved?
Second?
I'll second.
All right. Question?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So on the topic of the data retention, you mentioned that the district is able to ask for the data to be purged. Is there any data that would automatically be purged at any period of time after being shared?
It doesn't have a mechanism for automatically happening. We do have to submit in writing that we'd like to see that happen. Again, if the agreement gets renewed, then we continue to allow the agreement to exist, but either it gets terminated or upon expiration, it does require us to proactively say that we like that data purge.
Okay. So then, kind of just thinking a little bit logistically, for a student that may be applying, this data is shared and provided. That way, the universities or colleges would be able to determine potential acceptance. And then, let's say a student does imply and is accepted at a particular college or school, and they attend. That data does still exist, shared within the foundation.
Correct. And so, in the agreement, it's written as such, if a student is utilizing the portal, their information and all those benefits, they have the right and ability to say, "I'd like to retain that information for my use going forward" beyond our express written, you know, request to have the data purged. But they have to actually opt into that.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we also know, does this Foundation for California Community Colleges also play a role in sharing with post-baccalaureate work or graduate work? Does that information can be accessed?
No, I don't believe so. Yeah.
Heather has a question.
No, Heather.
Would this be like in unison with the Common Application, too? As you guys stated, it would be with the community colleges, UCs, and Cal States. Would that go into the private schools on the Common App, too?
That, I'm not 100% certain how that will work right now. They've only started with the public institutions for this, but I wouldn't be surprised if that's the direction they'll go. But I know these are the three that they're starting with for the system for rollout.
I think this is a great opportunity as a senior. I think this is lovely to see for upcoming classes, and I think we should definitely move forward with it.
Eric, one quick question. You said that we can get data from them when we ask to, for them to purge. Can we get it prior to that?
We can.
We can get it year to year to?
Yeah, they let us request our data at any time. Yeah.
All right. Any further questions?
No, I just have a comment. I want to thank Mrs. McGuire for flagging this and for her continued advocacy to bring resources and information to us. So, thank you.
All right. With that, I will call for the vote. Dr. Aguilar?
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. McGuire?
Absolutely, yes.
Heather?
Yes, for sure.
And I'm also a yes. Motion passes four zero with student rep and affirmative. Thank you, guys. That'll take us to item C1, Human Resources, Approval of Director of Special Ed. Dr. Kim?
Yes, Mr. Peterson and board, I would like to recommend, I'm sorry.
Can I get a motion?
Still moved?
A second?
I'll second.
Dr. Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I'd like to recommend Dr. Ryan Perry for the Director of Special Education position.
Call for the vote. Dr. Aguilar?
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. McGuire?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Motion passes four zero. Sorry, Heather, you can't vote on that one. Congratulations, Dr. Perry.
Allow me to share just a little bit about Dr. Perry. We are excited to have Dr. Ryan Perry joining us. He has just an incredible experience within the world of special education. He spent his greater part of his career, and he is a local product here in the greater city of Covina. And so, we're excited to have him come back to us from the Upland Unified School District, where he spent the last several years in his current role as a Director of Special Ed. He is, of many things, a father, and I know he has two children. One is a college student and one's a high school student, baseball player, and excited about that. He is a fellow Trojan, fight on, and we are just excited for the good work that's going to happen here in Charter Oak Unified in supporting and leading our students with its abilities and our entire staff. So, welcome, Dr. Perry.
All right. That'll take us to item C2, Resolution 182425, Enhancement Pay for Substitute Teachers.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? No discussion. I'll call for the vote. Dr. Aguilar?
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. McGuire?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Motion passes four zero with the student rep and the affirmative. I believe that takes us to the consent calendar. Anyone want anything pulled? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to adopt the arm?
Still moved?
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll call for the vote. Dr. Aguilar?
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. McGuire?
Yes.
Heather? I'm also a yes. Motion passes four zero with student rep and the affirmative, which takes us to board comments. Dr. Aguilar?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I'd love to just begin by echoing the large congratulations we've been hearing all night for all of our amazing student athletes. Wonderful conclusion of the fall season, specifically, of course, football. Amazing work they did all season long, not only developing as athletes, but developing as young men, as was alluded to earlier. Of course, the volleyball team, which we had the privilege of honoring this evening. We mentioned tennis, water polo. Congratulations. Can't wait to go see them at Mount SAC on Saturday. And then again, with the Vapa. Holiday Inn was great. I hope you all got a chance to see it. It was very, very, very impressive. Maybe one of the best ones I've seen yet. I just feel like every performance gets better and better than the last. The band will be at their Division 1A Southern California School Band and Orchestra Association Championships this Saturday at Doherty High School. If you want to go see what the world of high school marching band looks like, go check it out. Their performance will be at 7:56 PM. So, yes, 7:56, 5:06. Yeah, it will be right on time. So at 7:56 PM at Doherty High School, that will be their performance. You can see some of their competitors prior to that, and there will be two more competitors right after them. And then there's an award ceremony, and good luck to them, or good skill, I should say. I hope they go out and do a wonderful job and perhaps bring home some hardware. That would be wonderful. And then, in the season of college applications, just wanted to say I'm very happy to hear so many supports, as were mentioned today, that our high school seniors are receiving in their application process. Good luck to all of them. I hope they all are looking forward to achieving their dreams at whichever schools they choose to attend. And then, lastly, very thankful to be serving amongst such great board members, student board members and executive cabinet of the district. So thank you for a wonderful time of this year, of this season, and to the community as a whole. So, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Mrs. Flores?
Echoing everything Dr. Aguilar said, congrats to our fall sports. Good luck water polo. Welcome, Dr. Perry. Look forward to getting to know you. You're not from Walnut Valley, are you sure? All right. I have actually a really cool story, and Sue Hook will know what I'm talking about. I had the opportunity to meet a Charter Oak alum. She was actually a student at Royal Oak High School. So, I got to meet the mayor of Murrieta. Her name is Cindy Warren. And she was at Royal Oak Middle School, a very successful Charter Oak alum. So, had the opportunity to meet her, and we chatted about you. I know she's your cousin. So, that was just a really cool story. It's always great to meet a Charter Oak alum. So, that was really cool. And thankful for all of you. Thank you to our teachers, our directors, our staff behind the scenes, our principals, and to our amazing superintendent, and to Ms. Lori Miccell, who keeps it all together. She really is, we work for her. So, thank you all to our amazing assistant supes and to our great student representative. Hopefully, you've completed your college apps and, all right. Thank you all very much, and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Ms. McGuire?
First, hello, all. I want to say thank you for passing that data sharing agreement because I grew two new gray hairs since we tabled it last time. It was stressing me out. So I'm so happy because it's going to be a great incentive for our students to be able to see which colleges they are most likely to get accepted to. Also, we have our own board member here who was talking about how tedious it is to have to match her own classes up. And we've heard several seniors talk about having to match how our courses are named and numbered versus how the CSU system accepts them and then finds the grades. So, this is going to be a great advancement for the students in our district. We have, of course, Turkey Day coming up, and so I wanted to share that Operation Gobble by Assemblymember Blanca Rubio is this Sunday, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. If you or someone you know needs help with either a turkey or a gift card at the cost of a turkey and all the fixings for a Thanksgiving dinner, it's drive-through. It's right at our high school. And if you miss it because you were busy, you can then go to the YWCA on Monday, where they're having Operation Gobble Gobble, not to be confused with Operation Gobble. And there, you can receive a turkey until they run out on Monday morning. And it's the San Gabriel Valley YWCA on Baranca. And then, lastly, I have a request for either Pharaohs or you, I'm not sure. Before our next board meeting, can we have an update on the local impact of the federal shifts in the Department of Education so that we can figure out what's going on here locally? Oh, yes, and welcome, Dr. Perry. Thank you for joining us over here in Charter Oak. We're really happy to have you. And I think that's it for me. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. And I hope you all who get extended vacation time off, enjoy your week. I'll be at work still, but I'll be thinking of you all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Dr. Perry, welcome, sir. Looking forward to it. Get a lot of work ahead of you, and we're looking forward to everything you're going to be doing for us. I really like the fact that we're recognizing our student athletes because they are... I really like the fact that we're recognizing our student athletes because they are, they represent our, our school, our district throughout the southern region and they're doing a fantastic job. But also the coaches, they, they are here constantly. I didn't really understand how much time they put into it till my own daughter started playing volleyball here at the school. And, you know, Joel, John, and Cheyenne, it's just incredible the amount of time that they put in with these kids, but I think they've done a great job in, in building the culture, the traditions and, and instilling pride in, in Charter Oak to these young ladies and they're making them prepared for life after high school. So, I'd like to thank them, they're gone, but I'll tell them later. The VAPA program, once again, I mean, this district has so much to offer, from student athletes to the, the various things. We just have so much here that we can celebrate so many of our students, so it's really good. I had an opportunity to go to the homecoming, well, I drove to the homecoming. Actually, I drove, dropped off, drove back, and then picked up again. I hope the kids had a fun time because I didn't. But my daughter enjoyed it and she said it smelled a little bit out there near the ocean, but, but the boat ride, Ferris wheel, they had a good time out there. What else? Congratulations to our water polo. It's our first water polo CIF championship and now we're one game away from winning state and it's just phenomenal. And I also want to give a shout out to Dr. Perez, who's been at everything. And even in the rain today, I stopped by the water polo game, Hope was out there. And Chris Sweet has done a fantastic job with everything that's going on, organizing everything, making sure the kids have everything they need. So we're very fortunate that our administrators are in place, taking care of our kids and, and they have just as much pride in what's going on as we do. So, with that being said, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Hopefully you'll have a restful week off for you teachers and kids. I am. I know. That was a little dig, I was just giving you a little dig. Did you get it? Okay, all right, all right. Did you sense it? So it's just me? Okay, all right. I don't feel bad. All right, and good, we got finals coming up too, right?
Yes, in about three weeks.
In about three weeks, good luck with that.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, I am done and our future meeting is December 18th and we'll go ahead and, no, no need for closed session and we'll adjourn at...